Thank you. All right, so this is March 15th. It's our regular work session date and for the city of Minatrista. So I'm going to call the meeting to order and I'm first going to do a roll call. Make sure everybody can be heard. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, council present, Ann McGregor.
Here.
And Kathleen Refkin.
Here.
Pam Mortensen.
Here.
And absent this evening is John Chumperlin. Also staff that's here is Mike Brone, administrator.
I am here.
And our chief of police, Paul Falls.
I am here.
And our community development director, David Abel.
I am here.
Our director of administration, Ally Paulos.
I'm here.
Our city clerk, Chris Lindquist.
Hi, I'm here.
And let's see, our attorney with Kennedy and Graven this evening is Andrew Biggerstaff.
I'm here.
All right. And who else do we have?
I think Brian has joined us, so.
And oh, Brian, you've joined us now. And Brian, our finance director.
Yes, you save the best for last. I'm here. Thank you.
There you go. All right. All right. So we are all assembled and our agenda is, we have three items on the agenda. A broadband update and discussion. And then we'll be discussing ordinance, amending our solar energy systems. And then we'll be discussing our ordinance, amending our nuisance ordinance. So with that, I'm going to hand it right over to Ally Paulos.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. As we've been doing at these work sessions, I'm just providing you guys with a little update, a follow-up from our previous meeting and kind of what we've been working on since. So I'll just run through the memo quickly and then we can have further discussion on any items. So some follow-up questions you guys had from the February 16th work session. The 300 to 350 homes is the number of homes remaining after the deed boarder and boarder grant. Keep in mind, this number is not exact, as I've stated before. The use of PEG fees for build-out. MediaCom is unlikely to challenge the use of PEG fees for build-out as long as it is used to build out their systems. But even with that, staff would want to ensure proper justification for the use of PEG fees. And I would recommend, and I know Mr. Brone would recommend, obtaining legal advice prior to spending any of these funds. The timeline for deed build-out, it is unknown as far as the exact timeline. They were in the process of acquiring the necessary permits. They are having a field team out in the project area this week. So hopefully by the next work session, I should have a better timeline nailed down for you. Increasing franchise fees. Currently, the franchise fee is at 5% of gross revenues, which is the cap. So at this time, staff does not recommend changing the franchise fees. Piggybacking off of the deed grant, to request additional homes does require a few steps and we can discuss this a little later with the letter to MediaCom. City staff would be, will be looking at the areas of the project. Allison Fausti, our city engineer, provided us with a map of the areas. So we are evaluating any holes or areas in that map that we believe should be included and we'll kind of go from there. Timeline for the entire city. You guys inquired about how long hypothetically it would take to build out a MediaCom system. And it would take two to four years depending on construction schedules, approximate mileage, et cetera. And then council member Refkin had a question about the speed packages. And MediaCom does provide the same speed packages regardless of build-out location. Other providers, to date, staff has reached out to a few companies since our past meeting. So Extra Time Technologies is currently in a few areas providing fiber to the home, to residents. They proposed using access to our water towers to deploy microcell, which are flagpole-sized structure to offer internet and reach more residents. So we got a little bit of a cost estimate from them. What's different about Extra Time is they really require customer involvement. And hypothetically, the customer or resident must pay an installation fee, which can be anywhere from $100 to $600. And in addition, the cost of the microcell as well, which typically is split over any residents in the area being provided service. And those cells can cost anywhere from $2,000 to $3,000. I finally got a response from Verizon. There are no 5G carriers in Minatrista. And given the size, we are looking at about, looking at Verizon being available between 2022 and 2024 for 5G service. I think we spoke to Arvig prior to our last meeting. Hometown Fiber is a company that separates infrastructure from services. After meeting with them, Mr. Brone and I determined that this is kind of a non-starter. It is incredibly expensive. And they also requested to use, or were seeking access to our deed grant money. So we thought this was a non-starter. I am meeting with Midco on Wednesday. And Frontier Fiber Optic, they looked into potential building plans, but it does not look like what we're requesting would align with their building plans as of now. Compliance and review and comparing to other cities. Staff has reached out to Kennedy and Graven to begin this process. After discussion, staff has put together a letter to send to MediaCom, which is in your info packet. I hope you've all had a chance to look over that and we plan to send that off here after approval tomorrow. Staff began reaching out to cities who have agreements with MediaCom. And after discussing with legal counsel and personally reviewing the agreements, they are nearly verbatim in their language. The only difference is the mileage build-out and term of build-out. So we determined that was no longer necessary to pursue a comparison because there really is no comparison. And working together with surrounding communities, we've prepared a letter to send to the surrounding communities in hopes to work cooperative with elective officials in the listed cities in your memo. So we have provided that in attachment A. And we've also provided a resolution attachment B that would be sent with the letter to other cities so they could approve a resolution of support at an upcoming council meeting. And staff would also like to add the resolution for our city at the regular council meeting. So a resolution of support that we would approve tonight at the regular city council meeting. I know that's a lot of information, but that is what the memo has. So if you guys have any questions or follow-up, I'm happy to answer them. Or Mike, if I missed anything?
No, I think you did a pretty good job of going through the memo to the council. So yeah, we'll just sit and wait for a few questions here and hopefully if things come up, we can answer them.
Thank you, Ally.
Yeah.
So yeah, we'll move on to council. Council, do you have questions? I'm going to start with Ann.
Oh, okay, great. So I have lots of things. The piggybacking off the deed grant, if they are, if MediaCom is trying to do the necessary permits and whatever, and if there's any possibility that they could expand what they're doing, all of that kind of has to be decided fairly quickly, right? If they're going to put that into the permits they have now rather than have to redo permits?
So from what I can understand, council member McGregor, is they're acquiring the permits. They need to know what their current equipment that they're ordering, what that capacity is and if it can expand the 80 homes. That's kind of their first line of business. That's in this design phase that they're going through and getting these permits for. But after speaking with MediaCom, it doesn't sound like the permits, if we add 10, 20 homes, that they would, that that would be a huge delay if that were to happen. So that didn't seem like a concern of theirs when I spoke to them.
Good, excellent. So then moving on to yours, you've reached out to. Verizon has something called LTE. Did they say anything about that?
From my understanding, LTE is a service that is between residents and Verizon. If they so wish to pay for LTE, is my understanding. And they do have coverage in Minatrista. I think 4G and 5G were the main concerns of the council. And that appears to not have coverage until 2022, 2024. But I have not looked into LTE, but from just my knowledge of cell providers, that can be attached to anyone's plan and their data plan.
Ally, isn't LTE the same as 4G?
As I said, I'm not sure, Lisa. I wish, I don't know a lot about cell providers. So I can definitely look into that.
Yeah, I think LTE is the same as 4G.
Well, no, wait a second. The Verizon LTE, know somebody's using, is they're using it for internet. It replaced their HughesNet internet.
Okay.
And that's bringing it up. And I'm just bringing it up as, and maybe, it has nothing to do with the city and maybe it just is a point of interest that people could get it. I don't know.
And I have it on my Verizon. It says Verizon LTE. I don't know, you know, if that helps at all.
From what I know, 4G, 5G stands for fourth generation, fifth generation. An LTE might be a data service provided under 4G, but I'm not sure if they're the same. But I can check, I'll check into that.
Okay.
Okay, because I'm under the impression G's, 4G or 5G, have to do with cell service. Doesn't have to do with internet. But again, I'm not an expert either. So, okay. I just know that somebody has the Verizon internet service that replaced their HughesNet and it's working very well for them. So, and it's quite reasonable in cost. I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, I guess we'll talk about the letter. You want me to talk about the letter now?
Let's, oh, hold on just a second. Let me, Ann, we'll get to that in just a second. Let me see if there's other council members that have other questions first. And then we'll get to the letter and I'll go to you first for the letters. So Kathleen or Pam, any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay. Pam?
Just a real quick one on the follow-up with MediaCom. When are they going to be able to get back to you on more specific information? Did they give you like a date?
The area director thought early April. So I am confident I will be able to provide a better timeline at our work session in April.
Okay.
And I had a question too. I've received a couple emails from Jack Dom, I believe is the correct pronunciation of his name, but I'm not sure. And have you had a chance to connect with him? I think they've been looking at providing cell service in Minatrista. Do you know?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We spoke a bit last week and he wanted to connect this week as he had a busy week. So I'm just waiting on a response from him on a time and date. So I see that upcoming here this week, hopefully.
Okay. And do you know what type of service they're offering?
I don't know much. It's similar to Extra Time as in they want access to water towers, but I think it's a fiber to the home. Mike, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I do not, Ally.
I'll provide you with an update, Madam Mayor, at the next work session. I'll meet with them definitely before then.
Yep, thank you. All right. Any other questions? And otherwise, we'll move on to the letter. Okay. Ann, you had questions regarding the letter?
Okay, well, I don't have questions. The letter for sending around to the other cities, I don't have any issue with at all. That's fine. And the MediaCom letter, I don't, I really don't have any issues with that. That's a great letter. It's a little direct, but I think that MediaCom needs to know that we mean business. And I think the stern presence of the letter is excellent.
Okay, yep, good. Pam or Kathleen?
I agree with Ann on that. I was impressed with the letter as well.
Okay, Kathleen?
I agree with Ann as well.
All right, good. I agree, I think it was well put. I just have a comment on the letter to the other communities. Ally, for some reason, you have Waconia in here. And I'm a little concerned about Waconia. They're a little bit larger, more densely populated community. They're outside of Hennepin County. And they're really, I mean, why did you pick Waconia as part of this list?
I was attempting to pick cities that left LMCC and that we use to compare, you know, other, when we do other surveys in cities I've talked to and spoke with. So that was my rhyme or reason for choosing these cities. But if the council wishes I remove Waconia, I'm happy to do that.
I don't, well, again, I don't think Waconia was ever part of the LMCC.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you can double-check on that. I'm fairly certain they were not. I don't recall in the last 20 years that they've been a part of the LMCC.
Okay.
However, there's one or community that maybe isn't part, was not part of the LMCC, but is kind of out in this area and in a part of this group, and that's Greenfield. And I wonder if they might not, maybe should be added as a potential city here to join us in our efforts.
I think that's a great idea, Madam Mayor. I've actually spoken to the city administrator and they gave me contact information for some providers. So yes, I think if the council wishes to remove Waconia and add Greenfield, we can definitely do that.
Okay. Counsel, are you okay with that? Any comments?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Pam? Okay?
Me as well, fine.
All right, good. All right. Otherwise, I think it's fine and it's good. Yeah, anybody else? Questions, comments? So I just want to have a little discussion. So with your letter to MediaCom, if they were to come back and say, okay, we'll expand and provide, you know, we'll do more than what we were originally planning, how much do you want to pony up? Do we need to make that decision tonight or should we hold off until we hear back from them?
Mayor and council, I think we can hold off on that. I think that might be a little premature at this point. Let's just see how they take the letter and what we get for a response on some of the questions we're asking in the letter. And, you know, if they come back and they're put off by our letter, so to speak, you know, we can certainly talk to them about it. But I hope they come back with something that's fairly constructive. But we'll see, you know, what happens here, so.
Okay.
But I think it's a little premature, so.
Okay, all right. All right. Anybody else? Any staff or council, any more questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to clarify also, we would like to add the resolution for our city to the regular council agenda tonight for passage. That would be attachment C in the staff memo, staff packet.
Okay, do you want that under consent agenda items or would you like that under business items?
Mayor, I think that's your call. So, you know, if you want to put it under consent, you certainly can. But it doesn't sound like we have any structural changes to the letter. So other than, you know, a few changes of cities potentially. So the idea is just to be out front on this and saying, as we solicit other cities, say we've already passed our resolution on this particular topic and we encourage you to do the same, so.
Okay. Then I think if it's okay with the council, I would recommend we put it under consent agenda items. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, this is Ann.
Yes, this is Kathleen, yes.
Okay.
I'm here too.
All right, we'll put it on, under consent agenda. And then when would that letter go out then? Would that be sometime this week to the surrounding communities?
Yes, I will do it as soon as possible. I would say by the end of the week, I should have all the letters out.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would agree with that, Mayor, so.
All right, good. All right, so we can then move on. Is anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on. All right. Next up is our ordinance amending our solar energy systems. And I'm going to hand that over to David Abel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. So there was a recent application for ground mounted solar energy systems that brought questions to light regarding the zoning ordinance and its intent. There were members of our planning commission and city council that felt there were several uncertainties within the previous adopted ordinance number 431. And we did provide that included in your packet this evening. Ordinance 431 was adopted in 2015 and it was the first introduction of ground-mounted solar energy systems to city code in Minatrista. Ground-mounted solar systems previously had not been allowed in our city. Since its adoption, again, ordinance 431, the city council has reviewed and approved two conditional use permits for ground-mounted solar energy systems as small-scale accessory uses. There is one third instance I should mention in which a property owner in Minatrista was granted a building permit for an accessory ground-mounted solar system, solar energy system within the agricultural preservation zoning district. So we're aware of, there's a total of three to date within the city of Minatrista of these ground-mounted solar type systems. Based on issues that were raised with the site plan application in 2020, the city council determined it was in the best interests of the city to place a temporary moratorium on these types of applications. Specifically, the moratorium is in place for properties that are zoned agricultural preservation. The moratorium was put in place on November 9th of 2020 and the city council ultimately denied that site plan application in December of 2020. So to help to facilitate and initiate the study of solar energy systems, we put together a draft ordinance number 463 that's been put in your packet. This is an attempt to clarify the doubts raised and establish a clear understanding of the intent of the regulations on land within the city. I'll just briefly go over some of the highlighted changes that we have included in the ordinance number 463. The first being subdivision one, which outlines the purpose, has been amended to clarify the desire for small-scale solar systems. A conditional use permit is now required for all ground-mounted solar energy systems. There's further clarification made to construction being done in as compact manner as possible. We've also looked at covered calculations. We further defined the area as the entire system. And there's been a maximum area established at 3,000 square feet. I will note that number was actually increased from 2,000 square feet. That's based on feedback that we received from the planning commission when they, when they first reviewed this draft ordinances. Roof-mounted and ground-mounted solar systems must be accessory uses in all zoning districts. And then ground-mounted solar energy systems would no longer be a permitted use in the agricultural preservation zoning districts. As I said earlier, in all districts now, it would require a conditional use permit. So as I mentioned, the planning commission did discuss this draft ordinance. They did that at their February 22nd meeting. One change that they suggested was to increase the maximum allowed square footage from 2,000 square feet to 3,000 square feet in total. The thought there was that this was to ensure that there's enough of an allowance for a larger agricultural property. And specifically, I should add that one of our planning commissioners brought this up because they themselves actually have solar, it's attached to their barn on their property. So it's not a freestanding, it's attached to a building on a larger agricultural property. And their solar array was closer to this 3,000 square foot in size. I'll note that the three other properties I mentioned earlier, so we have three total ground-mounted solar systems in Minatrista, all of them are actually below 2,000 square feet. And so that's where as staff, why we came up with the 2,000 square foot as a threshold to start with. And as I mentioned, the planning commission's recommendation was to increase that by 1,000 to the 3,000 square feet. So that's why that has been changed. The other area of discussion with the planning commission was centered around double frontage and corner lots and the allowed location of ground-mounted solar on them. And unfortunately, at the time of the meeting, we didn't point this out to the planning commission, but staff did review that further after the meeting and found that there, that a corner lot and a double frontage lot are defined differently. Only a double-fronted lot is specifically called out differently in regards to the location of ground-mounted solar energy systems. So after reviewing that information and the definitions, since the planning commission meeting, we're kind of unclear how the planning commission would have felt regarding the existing language. Our thought is, is likely they would have probably dropped the discussion knowing that there is a difference. I think there was maybe some confusion about a double-fronted lot is basically the same thing as a corner lot. And as I mentioned, we looked at the definitions and there is a difference there. So I'm pretty sure that that would clear up their discussion and they likely wouldn't have any concerns with the way it's written. However, I mean, the good news is we do get another chance to see what they feel and to follow up with them with our clarification because it will go back to the planning commission for them to go ahead and hold a public hearing. So we'll certainly have a discussion with them and clarify the difference between the two and see if they have any more thoughts or comment on that. So I just wanted to point that out that at this time.
So David, David, real quick, just interrupting you real quick. So a double-frontage lot means you have a street in front of your house and you have a street on the backside of your house, on the back of your yard. So that's a double-frontage. And a corner lot, you're basically a corner lot. You have a street maybe on the side and/or front.
Correct, yep.
Okay. Just wanted, because I was a little confused before, but figured it out. Okay, thank you.
Sure, sure, yep. So as such, we have not made any changes to that section of the draft ordinance. The draft ordinance 463, as I mentioned, will go back to the planning commission. So we'll be able to clarify, they will hold a public hearing. We feel, staff feels, and I think the planning commission would agree, that the proposed amendments are a accumulation of the comments from the planning commission, city council and residents taken during the review of that recent site plan application. We're not asking council for any formal action tonight. Of course, we're just doing a presentation to you for informational purposes and we want to make sure that, just like with the planning commission, that we're headed down the right path with the intent of this ordinance before we go ahead and post an official public hearing. Like I said, likely that would, depending on the council's discussion this evening, that would happen in April is likely what we'd be shooting for, to have an April public hearing with the planning commission meeting. Depending upon how that went, if everything went fine, we would then bring it to one of your May city council meetings, one of the two meetings in May for ultimately adopting this ordinance and putting it into city code. So with that, I'm certainly available for questions. As Mayor mentioned earlier, we do have Andrew Biggerstaff from Kennedy and Graven, who did the drafting of this new ordinance number 463. So either one of us is certainly available for any questions the council might have.
Thank you. So I have a question. Maybe council can kind of weigh in here. So what, the ordinance says that a conditional use permit is required for all ground-mounted solar systems. And my question would be, do we want to require every resident that wants to put a few panels on the ground versus on their roof? Do we want to require them to do a conditional use permit? I'm just thinking if there's a homeowner and they want to put, let's, I'm just using a number, you know, four panels, but they don't want to mount it on their roof for various reasons, but they want to put it on the ground. Do we really want to make them go through all of the hoops for a conditional use permit for that? Do we want to have some kind of a threshold for somebody that wants to put it in their backyard, unobtrusive, a small, small scale, smaller than the 3,000 square feet? Do we want to make them go through the conditional use permit application? I guess that would be my question. Any thoughts on that?
My question, what goes into getting the conditional use permit?
Well, there's a $600 fee that they have to pay. And then it has to go to the planning commission and then it has to come to the city council. So we're talking depending, and then there's deadlines for the planning commission's submittals, which, and David can- submittals, which, and David can fill in here too. But it could be three to four weeks before they could get to the planning commission, and then at least another two weeks before it would come to the city council. So it's just, it's also a cost, you know, cost plus the timing. It could be a six-to-seven week timing thing. David, is that about right?
Yeah, I mean, summary-wise from this process, yes. I mean, and the big difference is, a conditional use permit requires a public hearing, and so that's what is factored into the timeline that the mayor has laid out. And so a public hearing means all property owners that are within five hundred feet of the subject property are notified of such hearing. And so, you know, that's one difference obviously you want to consider is, I mean, is it important? Whatever threshold, if you were to go down that path, is it important to notify people or not? If you have, if you set the threshold and say, let's just say it's a thousand square feet, that's a number that we already use for other accessory structures in Minatrista. And so that would be where I would, I guess, start if you're going to go down this path, because that would be consistent with other accessory structures. But if it's less than a thousand square feet, it's just an over, basically a building permit where no one is then notified of what they're doing. If it's bigger than that, it's a conditional use permit. It'll take a little bit longer of a process, and it does require the public hearing.
Okay.
How many panels, if you had to guess, would fit in a thousand square feet?
Well, that's hard to, I mean, we've seen, some of these things are, they're so different. The applications that we've seen, the thickness of them and the way they're built. But I mean, a thousand square feet, I mean, I'm just, you know, you think it's a, you know, a sheet of plywood is a four-foot by eight-foot, you know, sheet of plywood, and is that pretty close to the size of a panel, I suppose, you know? So how many, you know, kind of working off some math there quickly, you know, I don't know. They do vary in size, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's really an important question to get answered.
Right.
Because I think if we do put that out there, because I don't think it's right to charge them $600 for that, but I think there should be a size defined. I think the number of panels with that thousand square feet covers is important to know.
Either that or else maybe the ordinance would state the number of panels, well, maybe both, number of panels. And it wouldn't have to be a thousand, it could be five hundred square feet, or whatever the number we want. But, you know, what would an ordinary, kind of an average home need for panels? I guess that might be a question that would be good to have answered as well, so that we would know if they don't want to mount them on their roof and they want to put them on the ground, what would that look like, or how big would that be?
Yeah, I think the issue comes in, though, is if we decide on a number of panels, like, let's say we say eight, then the person who puts in ten is like, well, it's only two more, why do I have to pay $600? And they didn't have to pay $600? You know, it's a fine line of nitpicking how many panels is okay not to tell your neighbors about?
Well, I mean, that's a point, too. I'm just saying, do we want to charge, if somebody wants to put in three panels and doesn't want to mount them on their roof, do we want to charge them 600? You know what, I don't know, I'm just thinking.
Well, and again, it's not, it's $300 for the land use application, and it's $300 for the deposit. The deposit goes for any engineering or legal expense that is incurred during the review of an application. I mean, I would assume in any situation, if they're meeting all of our conditions, there'd likely be no need to involve the city attorney or the city engineer, so they're likely going to give back a majority of their $300 deposit. So what they're really out is the $300 application fee. They do have to get a building permit and pay the building permit, and I guess furthermore, I mean, I have not put in solar myself, but these aren't, we're not building tool sheds. I mean, these are, you know, it's fairly expensive to put these in. So I mean, to, you know, talk about 300 or 600 in the grand scheme of what actually is occurring here and what they're getting, I think is pretty, pretty minor overall in what's actually happening.
Yeah, it's also the timeframe, too. The six, seven-week, you know, timeframe, too. That's the only other thing. I'm just throwing it out there for discussion and for thought. I just want to make sure that we're as flexible as possible and yet still being fair and anyhow. Anybody, any other thoughts on that? Ann?
Yeah, I'm thinking, I think you know what you said, because what you said makes a lot of sense. On the other hand, the planning commission talked about, I had asked if there were any heat issues or if there was a noise issue, and I was told there aren't any, so that's a positive. And the other issue would be, what happens if somebody does put out four panels on their property, and then they abandon them? I'm under the impression that abandoning is not a good thing, as far as the elimination of the system, and that somebody has to be responsible for getting rid of it. So I'm just adding that as maybe a caveat to what you're suggesting.
Yeah, there is, and that's part of the ordinance, too. I think staff, and I don't know if planning commission discussed this, but there's a letter of, possibly, that the city could possibly impose a letter of credit or a deposit. But my concern with that is, these systems can last fifteen to twenty-five years, and so for the city to hold either their credit or their deposit for that length of time could be somewhat problematic. I spoke to David about that earlier, and he said, so in the ordinance, it says may require. So maybe if it was a larger application, or, I don't know if, I don't know how that would work, David. Can you kind of talk about that a little bit?
Well, yeah, I think it'd be one of those scenarios where if you had a lot of concern about that type of situation. So again, they all require a conditional use permit. The language is in the ordinance as proposed is open. It says the city may require those certain things. I think there's an overwhelming concern that the council has, or they're hearing from the neighbors about this issue at the time of the review. We can all say, okay, yeah, this is a situation where it certainly seems to make sense that we're going to want some sort of financial security to ensure that fifteen, twenty years down the road, it's going to be taken care of. I mean, again, I can't, you know, point to that specific scenario and tell you what it would look like, but, you know, it's better to have that there than to not for if you ever should needed. My guess and my assumption is, is everyone's okay with the way the language is written, and people are following those rules, that there's probably not that big of a concern that these things are going to be abandoned or what have you. I mean, the size we're talking about, this isn't stuff that you're likely going to be selling to power companies. As we mentioned, the three thousand square feet will run one agricultural property, given what our planning commissioner had said. So that's what, you know, they'll support and what they'll do. So really, I mean, it's going to be up to, you know, the property owner, you know, it's their property, they got to look at them, too, or they got to sell the property if they're going to abandon it or walk away. You know, so financially, you got to think that they're going to want to make it look good and maintain that for the future from a property value standpoint. It's not, we're not talking about companies coming in and owning these. The idea and intent behind this is, the owner that's there is using this for their own, you know, purposes on their property. That's, you know, the way that we've tried to design this ordinance.
Okay. So kind of to Ann's question, sorry, Ann, go ahead.
Well, no, go ahead, finish what you're going to say.
Okay, to Ann's question, what happens? So let's just say somebody, so let's just say it's a conditional use permit, and maybe Andrew can answer this. So they abandon it, or it becomes a junk property, sorry, like we have those here. Then, can the city go in, or can we put in their conditional use permit, that the city has the right to go in and remediate? And can we do that at their expense? In other words, charge it back to the property owner via their taxes or some other way? Andrew?
Sure, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I think that's a great question. You know, my thought on it is, you know, first of all, I think, as David kind of touched on, the abandonment language that we've got in the draft is the existing code language. So I just want to point that out, that's the language that we have today. And one of the things that that, of course, says is that abandonment is, you know, considered a misdemeanor. I think there's a kind of a wide range of thought about whether that type of language is useful or not. And as I'm listening to the conversation go on, sort of two different thoughts come to my mind. I think, Madam Mayor, your point is probably well-taken, and including something on a large conditional use project would make some sense to maybe give us that authority. But I also think that there may be some interplay between this specific issue of, you know, abandonment and the nuisance ordinance that we're going to talk about next on the agenda. And while, you know, frankly, when we were working on these two things, we didn't necessarily appreciate the overlap, I think that in the context that I think you're talking about it, somebody who truly just sort of, you know, wipes their hands of the whole thing and walks away, you know, I could certainly envision a situation where the city feels a need to go in and abate that condition, whether it's a safety issue or something else. And so I think that there are a couple of different mechanisms that we may be able to rely on. But certainly, I think, anytime you have a conditional use permit, as you all know, it provides sort of the first level of opportunity for the city to manage and supervise these types of negative consequences. I mean, that's why we conditionally permit things. So I think that it would be appropriate in the cases where you felt there were particular needs posed by a specific application, to maybe include something more specific, whether it's a letter of credit or just some sort of authority to go in and fix these problems should they arise. It would seem to me that that would be an appropriate thing to consider at the time of application.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ann?
Okay, so I was wavering back and forth between a small unit going in without the conditional use permit, but when the planning commission was talking about it, because I was on that call, when the planning commission was talking about it, I am fairly sure, and David, you can back this up, they put in conditional use permit across the board because it was, it's a way for the city to know what's going on with each site. And as these systems change over the years, it gives the city insight to those changes, and changes could be made to the ordinance at that point.
Yeah, okay. Good point. All right. Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good synopsis. I mean, that's why we, as staff, I mean, again, hearing about all the concerns and such that came out of that site plan application, you know, it already was required in all other zoning districts, it just wasn't in the egg preserve. And so, you know, those other two that required conditional use permits, that process went fine, right? No one complained, we held public hearings, there was no large outcry of opposition, they went in just fine, we've received zero complaints regarding them. So, you know, go with what worked, right? And let's do that across the board, because that process seemed to work. So that's where we came from, as we proposed it to the commission.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or suggestions?
Oh, this is Pam, and I just have a quick question. I'm not really convinced about the changing of the coverage calculation to three thousand square feet from two thousand square feet. Can you go over that one more time?
As to why they did that?
Yeah.
So one, the planning commissioner, or the chair of our planning commission, has solar mounted to her barn right now, and has for a number of years. And the size of that array on her barn is three thousand square, it's a little less than three thousand square feet. And that is what she needs to do power whatever, you know, she's powering on her larger agricultural property that she has out there. And so that was the rationale. That was, you know, gee, if this were two thousand, if you kept the two thousand square feet, and I wanted to do that, you know, after this ordinance was adopted, I wouldn't be able to do it, and that would not be enough power for me to do what I need to do on my agricultural property out in Minatrista. So, you know, the rationale was, we should be not, you know, thinking about the larger properties that might need to do a larger array than two thousand square feet. So that was the reason behind the three thousand square feet.
Okay, and this is only above-ground systems, right?
At ground level, yeah. On the ground.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You can do more, correct me, David, if I'm wrong, but you can do more if you have a larger, or you have multiple pole buildings or barns or whatever, as long as they're on the roof, right, David?
Right, right. This is just for, yeah, free ground-mounted solar energy systems, yes.
And then the other thing is, I think you also did this, and I don't know what page it's on, so forgive me, but you also did a coverage area. In other words, it can't exceed a certain amount of coverage on the lot. And do you know what that is?
Well, hard cover is always going to be at play. Three thousand square feet is the coverage. That's the coverage area that they're allowed to use on a, the max area that they can use on any piece of property. What you're going to have with your smaller pieces of property, you know, ten acres or less, is you're going to run into, there's already a maximum purpose surface coverage for all zoning districts in Minatrista. So you're either going to run into that issue, or you're going to run into setback issues as the smaller the property gets. Likely, those things are going to end up hindering you before you're going to get into that three thousand square foot range. Again, depending upon the size of your property, and your smaller properties, that's what you're going to run into.
And that's the point I wanted to make, is that we're not, smaller parcels or lots aren't going to put three thousand square feet in because they won't be able to from a coverage standpoint and from a setback standpoint. So it's really only the larger acreages that could install a three thousand square foot solar garden.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or things you think need to be incorporated into this new ordinance?
I have a question. So on the double-frontage lots, we just specify whichever lot is larger. What if the two lots are the same size? Do we need to provide a direction on if they happen to be the same size? Andrew, probably would be best to answer that one.
Yeah.
Or do we even care?
It comes to my record, that's a great question. I don't know that that came up, but I don't think you probably need to worry that much about it in this ordinance. Keep in mind, the way that this is all set up, if someone's going to come in and do this, as the mayor talked about a little while ago, they're going to need to go through the conditional use permit process, which would offer the city council and the planning commission an opportunity to review where they're proposing to cite the solar array. And, you know, I don't, the double-frontage lot provision is in there currently, and so I can't speak to why that was the rule that, you know, was adopted a few years ago. But I mean, I can guess about, you know, you want it in the larger yard to, just for massing and those sorts of things. And so I think that, you know, if somebody came in and you reviewed an application and thought, well, I think it would make more sense to put it on sort of the, you know, the gravel road on this side of your house as opposed to the main, you know, thoroughfare on this side. You know, through the conditional use permit process, you can have those discussions with the applicant and try to work through that. But I don't know that we necessarily have to worry about, and frankly, I don't know how many lots would be affected by, or have two, you know, identically sized yards. But I think part of the beauty, I guess, of the conditional use permit process is that it allows the city and the applicant to have those sort of discussions about, you know, where everyone thinks stuff should go, and you can kind of engage in that back and forth a little bit. So I think the way it's set up would allow you to certainly offer an opinion about that at the time that one of these was proposed. But if, you know, if it's the will of the council, we can certainly try to come up with something that if there's with something that if, if there's a rule you have in mind, we can certainly try to, you know, put it to, put it to form.
Nope. What you said makes sense. So I don't have an issue as long as you don't think it'll be an issue in the future.
What kind of, Andrew, to that point, is it necessary to even have the language regarding double frontage lots then? And does it create more problems then? Is it more problematic to have it in there versus if it was just silent?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I think, you know, my take on it would be that at, at the time that this double frontage requirement was adopted, there, you know, was some legislative intent to do that. And so I think I would look to the council about whether you feel strongly about whether on a, on a true double frontage lot, and the way that the code defines is, I think somebody touched on it earlier, but, you know, a double frontage lot is a lot that's in between two perpendicular, or I'm sorry, two parallel streets, so non-intersecting streets. So I think, Madam Mayor, you, you kind of defined earlier, as opposed to a corner lot, which of course is, you know, bounded by two intersecting streets, a 90 degree angle usually. And so, you know, I don't have a strong feeling, maybe David can, can, has thoughts about whether it makes sense to require a unit or a ground mounted array to be in a specific location on those true double frontage lots. But, I mean, if the council is not particularly concerned about that, then I think you could certainly remove it. The, the only caution that I would offer is that if you do think that that's a good general rule to require the array to be in the larger of the two lots, then saying it in the ordinance, it gives you sort of the teeth to say, you know, here's where it says you have to put it in the larger of the two lots. So I, I, I think it's really sort of a policy decision about whether you think that that rule is, is good rule, or whether you'd just rather review the citing on a case by case basis and, and try to work with applicants in that way.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, anything I'll add is, you know, so somewhat of the logic behind it would be if you've got a double fronted lot, the, the larger of your two, you would assume the larger of the two is typically going to be the rear. You, you're going to put your house probably closer to one of those streets and that'll be where you're going to access it from. And so, I mean, that, you know, theoretically, that's what you'd, you'd be hoping the scenario would be. But of course, you know, it's not a perfect world and, and you, they're not always going to be that way. You know, in some cases, the house might be way, way, way back in, in the woods. And so it's not always going to be that way. But the question that was asked to me today by, by the mayor was a good one, was well, how many, how many double front lots do we have? And I, and I don't, I don't have a specific number. I can just tell you it's not very many. As you look at a, a Minatrista zoning map and try to get a sense, I mean, you could, you know, you know, count them on one hand. I doubt whether you'd need a second hand to do it. So I, I don't think we have a lot of them. But again, I think at the end of the day, it's, you know, up to the council from a policy standpoint, whether you think that makes sense or not.
Okay. Well, Kathleen, where are you at with that then?
I mean, I'm fine leaving the language in there just to cover the few homes that might have this issue. I mean, because I would assume if a house that does have this issue has their front yard a lot bigger than the backyard, they could ask us to allow them to put it in the backyard and we could allow that, right? We don't have to follow the ordinance if we, you know, decide it works better for everyone if it's in the other lot, correct, Andrew?
Sorry about that. I was on mute. Yeah, I, I think that's true. I mean, there's, you know, variances and other things that would be potentially available. And we can certainly, you know, noodle on a little bit more and see if it makes sense to maybe just tweak the language to make it clear that the, you know, sort of the preferences that the larger lot be used. But, you know, in that unique circumstance where, where that may not be appropriate or, or may not, you know, everybody might agree that that rule doesn't work, you know, maybe build in some flexibility for the council. But I, I mean, I think generally, just as a matter of the conditional use permit process, you know, if, if it's clear and everybody's on board, I, I think you have the, some, some leeway to, you know, to modify that as an application work through. But we can, we'll, we'll look a little bit more closely at that. And if, if additional or changed language is needed, you know, we could certainly put something together before this starts going back through the process.
Yeah, then I'm, then I'm good leaving the language in there.
Okay. I just, I guess I'm just questioning if the house, let's say the house is facing one road and that's their primary entrance. So their backyard is, why wouldn't we just say put it in the backyard? I mean, do we really want solar systems in the front? It would look kind of odd to me anyhow, but take a look at it, you know, see if there's a little bit tweaking in terms of the verbiage. And then, I just want to make sure that, as Kathleen has said, if we have that flexibility, I'm fine with it. But if that creates a problem, then let's fix the problem beforehand versus passing the ordinance and then having to deal with it later. Know what I'm saying? So, okay. Okay. Anne, any other?
No, nothing else from me.
Okay. All right. Staff, do you have questions of council?
I don't, Madam Mayor. I think we're, like I said, I think based on this discussion, we, we'll do maybe a little tweaking and proceed, as I mentioned, with the April public hearing and then one of your May meetings for the city council to have an ordinance for adoption.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. So that concludes our discussion regarding the solar energy ordinance. So we'll move on to our next one, which is amending our nuisance ordinance. And I believe that's going to be Andrew.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. So, you know, as you all recognize, I was not at your March 1st work session, but I've been told there was a discussion about the nuisance code, and I know that it's an issue that's come up a few times in the past. And so in the pack of tonight, what we've done is put together a draft, sort of rewrite of the city's nuisance code. And we've included both the, the current nuisance code as well as the new draft nuisance code. And as we pointed out in the, the memo that we wrote kind of to cover the subject, one of the difficulties in sort of presenting this to you is that because we've sort of rewritten the code as opposed to just tried to change the existing code, it wasn't really very easy to do sort of a red line. So, so really, the only way to compare them is to sort of read them side by side. But I thought I'd just give you maybe a quick overview of some of the big picture changes that we made. And then, you know, certainly be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback you have. And then I, I'll just mention, excuse me, the other item that was in the pack, it was a memo that I know you've all seen a few times now, related to code enforcement options. And I know I've talked with you about this and I know Ron Beatty's talked with you about it a few times, but we just wanted to give you all the information in one place and make it available so that, so that you could compare it. So as I pointed out in the memo, one of the big differences between the two ordinances, the, the existing ordinance and the draft ordinance has to do with sort of the list of defined nuisances. And as we identified, we had used the nuisance ordinance that was adopted by the city of Medina just over now 10 years ago as sort of a starting place. But I think it's important to note that that, that ordinance also still follows or still closely resembles the League of Minnesota City's model nuisance ordinance, both in substance and format. So, so we relied on that as a starting point to develop this list of, you know, sort of nuisance conditions. And then we've also included a few additional items that are sort of city specific, and that's having consulted with, with the staff about some of their experiences and, and certainly working with the council on a few, you know, quote unquote, problems over the years. So that's one of the biggest changes to this draft ordinance. And then the other sort of major change comes in the form of the enforcement mechanisms. And if, if you recall, I think in the past, we've had discussions about what are the city's options when a problem is sort of, or I'm sorry, a property is, is, you know, in a nuisance state or, you know, has a bunch of junk on it or the, you know, the buildings are rundown and become dangerous and things like that. And one of the difficulties that Minatrista's had and frankly, that cities all across the state have is, is how to address those things. And one of the things that we thought and thought for some time was lacking in our current ordinance is any meaningful due process requirements within our process. And so we wrote, we rewrote the process so that it would reflect sort of a more formal procedure for notifying property owners of nuisance conditions. And then hopefully working with them to abate those conditions, but ultimately providing the council and the city the authority to move forward and deal with problems that arise. And then we've also included some, some language that would provide some assessment authority for those abatements. The one, one of the, the points that I did want to just reiterate from the memo, and I know this has been something we've talked about at length before, but I, I just want to caution that anytime the city were to use this ordinance in the future, so if there's a particular property that you felt it necessary to, to try to do an abatement on, there are still going to be situations in which I think it would be useful and, and appropriate to, for instance, attempt to get a court order before the city does any abatement activities. And those are primarily the, the larger and more costly abatements because what tends to happen is when cities go in and abate these things, you know, everything that's taken off the property, you know, suddenly becomes a historical artifact or some valuable piece of property. And then you get into this long, this long litigation about, you know, how much is it worth and how much is somebody owed? And so in, in the, the sort of big cases, it makes, it still makes sense to do some of that upfront and to get the approval of the court before we take those actions. But that's something we can deal with on a case by case basis, simply having an ordinance that is more inclusive and more specific as to the enforcement mechanisms, I think will be useful to help you address those things as they arise. And, and the other point that I made in the memo that I just want to reiterate is that adopting the ordinance doesn't necessarily change how you or how the city staff need to approach these issues. It just provides sort of a tool in the toolbox, if you will, for how you might address them when you do receive complaints. So I, I think that's important because, you know, as most cities do, the city has long operated on sort of a complaint basis. And even then, it's, it's really up to the council to determine, you know, which properties to, to try to abate, whether an abatement action is necessary or appropriate and, you know, and all those sorts of policy decisions that, that you ultimately can, you know, retain control to make. So, so that's kind of the broad overview. Like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any specific questions or, you know, if there's anything that you see that's missing or that you'd like, you know, tweaked or anything like that, I'd be happy to, to sort of take notes and to make those changes as we kind of look at moving this forward.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't quickly kind of go through, I'm, I'm not saying read every single line, but if we should go through maybe page by page, just quickly, there's about four pages, if, if I'm correct, starting on page 44, is that correct? David?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that, yeah, yep. I'm just looking at the page here, but that is correct. So the, so the draft ordinance, about four pages. Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea. I can certainly give you sort of the, the quick overview section by section. That might be helpful.
Lisa, I'm sorry, Lisa, thanks for suggesting that because I know there are people on this call that probably did not see this information front. So I think it's important that we just highlight it and go through it real quickly.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll start out under section 1510 nuisances, public nuisances defined. And again, I don't know how much detail you want to get into, but it's basically whoever by an act or failure to perform a legal duty intentionally does any of the following is guilty of maintaining a public nuisance, which is a misdemeanor. So it gives you the different maintains or permits a condition which unreasonably annoys, injures or endangers the safety, health, morals, comfort or repose of any considerable number of members of the public, or interferes with or obstructs or renders dangerous for passage of public streets and so on, is guilty of any other act or omission declared by law, are this ordinance to be a public nuisance, whether or not any sentence is specifically provided therefore in one permits real property under his or her control to be used to maintain a public nuisance, permits or maintains any condition which causes blighted or undesirable effect on a property. I have a couple of questions. Are some of these, so for instance, it says permits or maintains any condition which causes a blighted or undesirable effect on a property. Andrew, is that somewhat ambiguous?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that's, yep.
Beauty can be in the eyes of the beholder.
No, that's, that's absolutely right, Madam Mayor. And, and I think, you know, just to take a quick step back, I think one, one of the things I probably failed to mention, and it gets kind of into the specific makeup of the ordinance, the way that I would kind of explain 1510.01, the section you just went through to people, is that that really creates sort of the broad general scope of what is a, what is a nuisance. And then when you look at 1510.05, it's titled additional public nuisances defined, and I think there's 18 or 19, 18 subdivisions there. And so those, those specific things are, whether specific things that you, so for instance, subdivision one, somebody who permits or maintains diseased animals, fish fall wild or domestic, whether confined or running at large. And then the next one's about carcasses of animals. I mean, those are sort of, those are specific nuisance conditions that, that frankly are included in most city ordinances related to, to nuisances. And so the way that these two things are generally paired is sort of hand in hand. And I, I view subdivision one or section one, 151001, as providing sort of the general umbrella of what is and is not a nuisance. And I'll, you know, I'll be the first to admit that, you know, nuisances are sort of one of those things, you, you know them when you see them, because they do, what is a nuisance, you're absolutely right, can vary from person to person. And that's why, at the end of the day, it's ultimately up to the council to determine, does something constitute a nuisance based on the ordinance? And it's going to depend on the facts and, and all those sorts of things. But I think, you know, this section is purposely written in a way that provides some flexibility to, to the council. If we were going to move forward with an abatement, it would be generally the city's obligation, for instance, to convince a court that whatever the conditions were, you know, satisfied these requirements and that these requirements were, were appropriate. But, but this language is, is fairly broadly used, and that's why we felt comfortable relying on it here as well. And again, just kind of acknowledging that this council and future councils will retain their authority to, to make those decisions before ultimately moving forward, you know, just sort of remind that, remind you of that fact too.
Okay. All right. Council, any questions regarding 151001? Go ahead, Anne.
Okay. I realize that choosing wording is difficult, but in the first thing, unreasonably annoys, it's one thing, injures and endangers the safety, health, that it is, is fine, but unreasonably annoys can be really variable, and I don't like those words. So that's, that's a complaint from me. And then any considerable number. I think there needs to be more of a definition there as well. Is that two? Is that seven? Is that 10? What is that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, if I could just offer my thought on that. I think we could certainly modify that language. I think part of the difficulty that you run into though is that, I mean, the universe is large of, of, of things that may or may not be considered nuisances. And frankly, I think that the facts are, are usually pretty important in terms of whether a particular council is going to think something is a nuisance or not. And so I, I think the risk that you run by trying to create, you know, sort of a line in the sand is that some point down the road, you come to a situation where it only bothers four neighbors instead of five or what, you know, whatever the rule might be. And again, it's, it's certainly a policy decision. I just think, like I said, I think the goal of this language was to provide the council with, with adequate flexibility to, to address those things. And, and this, I mean, at least based on my opinion, this is not something that would be automatically applied to people. I mean, normally the way nuisance is nuisance abatement works is that once there's an issue, once the city receives a complaint, there's a dialogue that goes on. And people, you know, some people say, oh my gosh, I had no idea that was, you know, that was bothering so and so, or whatever the case may be, you know, I'll, I'll take care of it. Other people are much more reticent to, to sort of just, you know, voluntarily cease whatever the activity is. And, you know, the city may want to look forward to, to doing some sort of abatement or, or other action against them. But again, I, you know, the, I think the goal of it is purposely to be more general. But, you know, acknowledging that if we start putting those specific limits in, I think we'll just be potentially, you know, hampering our ability to use the ordinance down the road, especially as you look at the city with, you know, some more, you know, urban or suburban areas and, and some more rural areas, you know. In, in an area with 10 acre lots, you know, affecting four properties, it's probably going to be a lot more difficult as opposed to somebody who's in a, you know, one of the developed, more developed areas. So just some general thoughts, I mean, ultimately, it's the council's decision and, and we can, you know, we can certainly add some more specifics to it, but, but that's at least the thought process that goes into drafting it the more general way.
Anne, maybe what we should do is, just a thought, what if we removed unreasonably annoys? And so it would read something to the effect maintains or permits a condition which is injurious or injures or endangers the Or endangers the safety, health, morals, comfort, or repose of the public, of members of the public.
Yeah, like that better, like that a lot better.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll take out the unreasonably annoys. And we'll take out considerable number and just replace it with members of the public. Okay.
And I think, Madam Mayor, if I may, I think that we just want to remove the annoys because I think that the unreasonably would apply to injures and endangers as well.
Oh, okay. Okay, I know, right, okay. Is that okay, Anne?
That's fine with me, yes.
And then, Mayor and Council, I'll just jump in here, you know, as we're, it sounds like we're doing a little wordsmithing here on some of this stuff. So the one caution I would lend, and I have no problem with the change you just made. But I think as we go through this, as Andrew said, those first five subdivisions on section oh-one. Just kind of lay the groundwork. And I think what we don't want to do when we get to section oh-five, since we have. What is it, seventeen or eighteen of them? I would try to look at those as a whole instead of just zone in on. One or two of them and try to wordsmith the heck out of a lot of these because. As we've all found out, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder here. And they're, these are the typical. Sections or these are the typical ways that properties become nuisance properties. In the eyes of people. And it could be animals, it could be dumping junk, it could be old furniture. And those eighteen subdivisions in that next sec, in section oh-five. Are there to give you, again, like Andrew said, some flexibility here. So. You may not have a bunch of animal carcasses, but you might have a bunch of junk around and they're both equally annoying, so.
And let's, we'll do that when we get there. But I think it's important to. Have the council weigh in, even if it's a little bit of wordsmithing because ultimately we have to approve. The ordinance. And I really want the entire council to be fully on board with it and to have put their, their stamp on it. So I understand not getting too far into the weeds, but I don't think it's. Too much if the council wants to make some changes to the wording. So that's just where I'm coming from. And I think Anne would agree. So let's, yeah, we won't get. Too far, like I said, too tedious, but I think there's some words that are going to be important to, to the council to maybe change, so.
If I make, can you, I'm just trying to make sure that I get good notes here. What was the change to considerable number of any considerable number? What did you want that changed to?
Leave out considerable number and just say, it would say, or repose of members of the public. So it'd say any considerable number of that is you leave out and you would just say repose of, of members of the public.
Madam Mayor and Andrew, if I may ask, this is Paul. Doesn't a nuisance complaint require more than one person or in order for us to even move forward with it? Typically, we wouldn't even be able to bring this to court if it was simply one person complaining. Isn't that? True?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I think Chief Falls brings up a good point, and it's one that, you know, we talked a little bit about at the staff level. There are, you know, there is a difference. Between a private and a public nuisance. And, you know, maybe. Sort of further illustrating the difficulty with, with putting pen to paper on some of this stuff. I think, at least in my opinion, in my judgment. What the nuisance is, is going to depend on whether. One or two or three or four people being offended or bothered by it is sufficient. Or whether it needs to be the whole community. I mean, I think there's, there's two levels to it. I think Chief Falls is raising sort of the proof element. And, you know, I think that there's certainly a proof element, you know. The fact that, you know, I don't know, your neighbor's playing the drums on their deck or something, you know, something that really only bothers you. You know, typically doesn't rise to the level of city intervention in a nuisance. Situation. And it's something that frankly, if we were dealing with that situation, I think we would advise you that. We're probably facing an uphill battle if we were to go to court on that. And then there's the other, you know, sort of the more policy oriented issue with all of this. And that's that. When these issues do come into the city's attention. You know, someone has to make a decision about whether it warrants city intervention and whether it warrants sort of initiating the process. And it's ultimately going to be up to the council about whether it warrants spending public dollars to address these, these issues that may only affect a small group of people. And so, so there is, you know, again, I hate to sort of. Seem like I'm hiding the ball because I'm not. It's just, there's a lot of gray area when it comes to this because a lot of it's going to depend on. This, the size and scope essentially of whatever the problem issue is. For us to determine whether it's something that we have a good chance of, of, you know, getting abatement authority or being able to recover our costs or if it's something that's kind of. You know, I don't know, it toes the line a little bit or, you know, it may, it may be in the, too much in that gray area that we feel comfortable moving forward. So. Yes, I think the general rule is that if one person is annoyed or finds a specific thing problematic. That's not usually a public nuisance. I think it can be in certain instances, but it's, it would be very rare for that to be the case.
But Chief Falls, when you say members of the public, it doesn't imply one person, it implies. Any number of people. So I think that would kind of get to your point too, where it's not just one complaint. It could be two complaints or as Mr. Biggerstaff said, it could be ten complaints. So I think it gives us flexibility as Andrew was pointing out.
Madam Mayor, I would agree that although I think considerable number is. Provides a little bit more clarity for people that, you know, we deal with a fair amount of. Nuisance complaints throughout the year. Many of them not as large as the one we all have in mind. But nonetheless, if, my concern is that if the language is too weak, everyone's going to think they can complain about everything. And it's going to create just a ton of complaints versus. Outlining it in a manner where if it's not serious, it's not something that the city's going to get involved in. That was my thought.
Okay.
Okay, this is Anne. Okay, let me just take it the opposite way then. Instead of any considerable number, I know you don't want to put a number in there, but you ought to say something like, I don't know, the majority of the neighborhood or. Something that puts it in better context, I think. Something that's less ambiguous.
Can I say something? This is Kathleen. I, I think the whole point of fifteen-ten-point-oh-one is to be generally vague. So we can cover broad things that may only annoy two people pending the acreage, or it could annoy, you know, everyone on the street. You want it to be vague because we want to be able to do something about it. If it is a big issue. The more restrictions we put on it, the harder it's going to be to enforce it to any level. And I mean, I don't really have an issue with the unreasonably annoys language because that's what a nuisance is. It's an annoyance. It bothers people. And I think it's good that we put it in the language so everyone knows it has to unreasonably annoy you. It can't just be, you know, your neighbor's dog's barking or your neighbor's kids outside, you know. Playing the drums. It needs to unreasonably annoy a good number of people. That's my.
Okay. Yep. Good discussion though. I think, good, good points. Very good. So the question then, and I want to move on beyond this sentence, so. Do we leave? Okay, Anne, I think you would be comfortable saying annoys and unreasonably leaving that out. Kathleen, are you okay leaving annoys or unreasonably out?
No, I think you have to leave unreasonably in there.
Okay. I'm okay either way.
What was that?
Come again?
Totally subjective.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, exactly.
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, Kathleen, what did you say?
I was just asking what Pam thought.
Okay, Pam?
I would, just after hearing the discussion, I would leave it in as written, unreasonably annoys. And then leave it up to the council, what is determined annoyed. Because what's going to end up happening is. If it is just something that is in the eyes of the beholder what junk is. The city council, whoever that may be, will determine, most of the time it's going to be a matter of a safety issue. Or something, health, that type of thing. So I would leave at this point, leaving it in unreasonably annoys.
Okay, all right. Okay, well then. Can you live with that, Anne?
Yeah, no, not really, but, but.
All right. Can we live with not saying considerable number? And if we just say. Members of the public, it does say more than one. But it gives the council more latitude and more flexibility, I think. I would prefer just members of the public.
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, Kathleen?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Anything else in, in section? Point-oh-one, fifteen-ten-oh-one, all right? Then definitions, are there, is there anything? It defines garbage, it defines rubbish. Is there any other definition or anything there that you need to? I think it's okay. Then we'll move on to fifteen-ten-point-oh-five, and this is where Mike was saying there's, there's nineteen here. So. Let's just quickly go through them and then come back. And so there's diseased animals. Fish or fowl, wild or domestic, whether confined or running at large. Carcasses of animals, fish or fowl, wild or domestic, not buried or destroyed within twenty-four hours after death. Garbage not stored in rodent-free and fly-tight containers. Or garbage stored so as to emit foul and disagreeable odors or garbage stored so as to constitute a hazard or to public health. Four is accumulation of rubbish as defined herein. Five is the dumping of any affluent garbage, rubbish, wastewater, fuel, oil, lubricant, or other non-tox. Nauseous, I'm sorry, substance upon public or private property. Six is any open well, pit, excavation, structure, barrier, or other obstruction which endangers public health, safety, or welfare. Seven is the pollution of any public or private well or cistern, any public stream, lake, canal, or body of water by affluent garbage, rubbish, or other noxious substance. Eight is any nauseous weeds or any other vegetation which endangers public health, safety, or welfare. The emitting or production of dense smoke, nauseous fumes, gas, cinders, sparks, and unreasonable quantities. Then the public exposure of persons having a contagious disease or condition which endangers public health, safety, or welfare. Eleven, accumulation of disused furniture appliances, chimney, automobiles, trucks, buses, et cetera. I won't read all of the list. And then twelve, accumulations of animal waste, litter, and manure, which pose a risk of pollution of, of ground or surface waters. Et cetera. And then thirteen, any motor vehicle which is not currently licensed in Minnesota or any other state or which is not in operable condition. Motor vehicle, not fuels. And then fourteen, maintenance of grass or weeds on a property at a height of more than eight inches except. On those portions of a property actively farmed or used for agricultural purposes. Or on residential properties, one acre or larger in size and located in the R-one, R-two, R-two. R-three, R-five, the RDB, AAP, and STD zoning districts. And so on. Fifteen, any condition whereby, we'll go on. So let's do that, that's on page forty-five. One through, let's go one through ten. Are there any issues there? I'll start with Kathleen or Anne, go ahead.
Okay, fine. Number eight, any noxious weeds. If it's on somebody's property. And its definition of noxious weeds. If it's on somebody's property, people should just stay off of their property. They can have whatever weeds they want. That's one.
Well, can I say something about that, Anne?
Yes.
Some weeds spread. And there was one that just happened up at our cabin that one of our neighbors had, and it was a very, very destructive plant. And if you catch it early, it won't spread. So I, you know, in that case, I can see where a weed like that. Should be addressed.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may just, and there's a state statute that deals with noxious weeds, so I think that that's generally where that provision comes from. But if it's the will of the council, we can certainly look at modifying that language.
I'm thinking about, in my own case, we have a, we have a property that has woods in the back. And all kinds of things grow in the woods. And, and there are a few plants in there that our neighbors have asked us to take out. Because it spreads to their property. And we do it where we can, but we can't meticulously take out every single one of them. So I don't want to leave myself open to something that could be.
Yeah. Yeah, kind of like buckthorn, for instance. I mean, if I've got, I've got ten acres here and. It's riddled with buckthorn and you just, you can't get rid of it and it would cost tens of thousands of dollars. So what do you do there?
Good point.
And Madam Mayor, if, again, if I may, I think, you know, that, that kind of, I think, highlights the discussion we just got done with about what is unreasonable. And, you know. My own personal opinion, I don't think it would be reasonable to expect people to, to check their entire property, especially a larger property, especially a property with woodland and things like that. For every instance of, you know, quote-unquote, noxious weeds, as those things may be defined. I, you know, so. Again, I, I think that, I just want to reiterate that the city and ultimately the city council would have the final say in whether. It is appropriate to make somebody go in, in the, you know, the back of the woods. And whether that's, you know, whether that, having that condition out there is something that unreasonably affects. You know, a considerable number or the public generally, whatever the case may be. But I think that, again, just in my experience, these provisions are usually intended to address sort of. Things in the front yard or things people may, may, you know, may get into, kids may get into, or whatever the case may be, or that may spread. So there is, again, it gets down to that reasonableness. And I, I would just argue that it's not reasonable to expect somebody to police, you know, especially a natural area.
No, not working. Essentially, what you're saying, what you're still saying with that is, what you're still saying with that is that you're opening it up. What if you have an unreasonable council? And the council decides they're against buckthorn? No. You have to put in different words in there or something else, or take it out.
What type of noxious weeds or vegetation would endanger public health?
Well, there was the one weed, and I do not know the name of it, but this one, it wasn't just the health. It wraps around like septic systems and underground things. That causes destruction to those types of items.
Yeah, but I mean, tree roots can do that too, so.
Yeah, but this, this one was particularly.
Aggressive.
Very aggressive, yes, thank you. And it was easily caught and handled if you catch, you know, if you find it, but, yeah.
And Madam Mayor, again, you know, I mentioned a moment ago, but the commissioner of the Department of Agriculture maintains the list of prohibited. Noxious weeds and they're broken into several categories. One of them is weeds that people are by state law required to eradicate. One, one list is weeds that people are required to control. And so those are matters of state law, which of course we can't control. But that list is available online, I'm sure. But those are the definitions that are usually relied on for purposes of nuisance ordinances.
Well, maybe what we could do, Andrew, is if you could maybe reword this a little bit and then bring back another wording of it. That we could take another run at it or another look at it. Would that?
Yeah, maybe just put something in there.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, can you summarize the change that you're looking for? Because what I'm hearing is that if the council's unreasonable, they're going to. Say that a condition is unreasonable. So I guess if you can summarize the change you're looking for, we can certainly work on some language.
Okay, Anne, help me out here.
I think. I think the definition is what the endangerment, if that's a correct word, what the, how it endangers the public health. And that incorporates what Pam's talking about. And I think takes away the issue that somebody would have to clear their ten acres of buckthorn. Does that work for you?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, yeah, assuming that's directed to me again, well, yes. I think that the state law prohibitions on noxious weeds would still apply. And so, you know, this is simply in the context of. Of the city's ordinance, but we'll certainly look at that. And if there's a way to alter that, we'll do that. Or if it makes sense to just delete it, we can certainly propose to do that.
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Okay, thanks, Andrew. Anne, any other ones?
Sure, let's start with number 10.
Okay.
Okay. The public exposure of persons having contagious disease or condition which endangers public health, safety. More words are needed on that one. Maybe like deadly contagious disease, or something like, if somebody has a cold, they're not going to, they're not going to be kept home.
Well, and how would you even know if there's, if they have a contagious disease? Sometimes you wouldn't even know it.
Good point, excellent point.
Andrew, how?
Kind of a weird sentence.
Yeah, Andrew, why is this one in there? I mean, is this a common thing? Is this just what was in Medina's, and we left it? Like, why is that one even in there?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I believe the reason that that language is in there would be to prevent people who, again, I can't stress enough that this, these categories, and I take Councilmember McGregor's point, that the council in the future may be unreasonable and may look to use this, to use it in a way that wasn't intended, or whatever the case may be. But there's a number of affirmative steps that the city would have to take to actually put any of these things into operation. And so the list that's included, and the list that's included in the model ordinance and in many of the nuisance ordinances out there, seeks to provide maximum flexibility for cities to address issues that they're concerned about or that they believe rise to the level of, you know, nuisance abatement. My understanding of this language is that it's largely intended to address more severe things than, you know, the common cold. The city is, well, I don't, I cannot imagine a city taking action against somebody for leaving their home with a cold or a flu, or whatever the case may be. But like I said, I think the point is that, you know, that a future council may seek to do that.
Why don't we just eliminate that? Because I think we could have other avenues to pursue something like that. I guess I would just say eliminate it. It does, to me, it doesn't fall in the nuisance category. I don't know.
I agree. I'd just say eliminate it.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right, so we're going to eliminate that. On number 11, I do have a comment. I think we should add, and this would particularly apply to a given property, we should add ambulances, fire trucks, and RVs. Because on this particular property, there have been ambulance, old dilapidated ambulances, there have been old fire trucks, there have been multiple RVs. So I think we should add that to the list.
Do we need to add boats?
Yeah, there are, yeah, we should add.
And they are both on there, or they have been on there.
It says, say what they have, so what's part of the list here? Disused furniture, appliances, machinery, automobiles, trucks, buses, light and heavy equipment, semi-trucks, and any other related vehicles or equipment and parts thereof, and freight or cargo containers of any kind which may become a harborage for rats, snakes, or vermin, or which may be conducive to fire, or which endangers the health, safety, etc., and makes a blighting condition in a particular neighborhood. I think, yeah, so you could add boats, trailers, fire trucks, ambulances, RVs. If they're in a blighted condition and they're sitting there, you know, I think they should be added. Are we okay with that?
I am.
Yes.
Okay. Pam? Okay. All right. Anything else there? Okay, we'll move on then. What about 12, 13? Oh, I know, I did have a comment on 12. So for instance, if somebody has a hobby farm and they have horses, you know, and they have a manure pile, is that considered a nuisance? Or how do you handle that? Andrew?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it would ultimately be up to the city council to determine whether a particular manure pile constituted a nuisance or not.
Okay, because I know that also the watersheds have an issue with manure piles, particularly like horse, or cow, or cattle, or whatever. And I know they've been working with horse owners to try and contain that. So, yeah, I don't know. Anybody have any thoughts there?
I'm fine leaving it in. It just gives us another avenue in case, you know, it becomes an issue. But, you know, the big thing is risk of pollution or groundwater or service. So just because they have a pile of manure doesn't necessarily mean it's hurting anybody.
Yeah, yeah, good point. All right, okay. Any other comments on page 45?
On 14, how did we arrive at eight inches for grass and weeds? Just because I live in a neighborhood with lots of these guys doing it. So eight inches gets there pretty quick because they can't cut it for eight weeks. So it seems kind of short in the scheme of things. I don't know if we want to up it to like a foot or something, but.
I don't know where that came from. Yeah, I, maybe it's, who knows? I don't, I don't care if it's eight inches or 12 inches, you know, it doesn't matter to me. Again, I'm sure, Andrew, you took it from some already, you know, designed nuisance ordinance. Any quick comments on that?
Madam Mayor, I believe that's a statutory requirement. But of course, if the council, I mean, it's, the city drives the process. So if you want it to be 12 inches for purposes of your ordinance, that's fine by me.
Yeah. I think they say for healthy grass, you should be cutting it, if I'm not, if I'm correct, like, three inches, you know, it should be three inches tall. You should cut it, no, you don't want it real short, because the shorter you cut it, then the shorter, or the shallower the roots are. So, but eight inches is fine. I mean, I don't know, eight, 10? Let's say 10 inches. Okay, is that okay?
So the only thing I'll throw out, Mayor and council, on this one is, you know, we're discussing properties, we're all kind of familiar with a few of them. But, you know, this could apply to a neighborhood with some really nice houses that are all next to each other. So is eight inches still the right number if you're thinking about it in that context? Or do you want to still wait till it gets to be a foot tall before we do something? I think somebody next door to me with an eight-inch-high lawn might be kind of a bother, so.
Right.
So I was only throwing it out there. This is not just rural properties we're dealing with, so.
I think it'd be more the developed areas and the smaller lots.
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
May I make a quick comment?
Yeah, please.
As, you know, certainly, there's, this is a very complicated issue, and there's just all kinds of topics we're trying to cover in a short period of time. But I, as we move forward, I just want to make sure that the council is aware that as we go through a lot of the language in this draft ordinance, it's important that we keep in mind that a lot of the language is very similar to state statute and works in conjunction with state statute, which is important from an enforcement standpoint. So like, for example, the noxious weeds, that is language right out of the state statute. And oftentimes, ordinances work in conjunction with state statute in order to be enforced properly. So I guess it'll be up to our legal staff to determine if we're making too many changes where that's going to imp, or impede our ability to enforce it. Because a lot of these things, the police department enforces on a much more regular basis, and it never advances to the point where we have to get the council involved. And I just want to make sure we're not changing it too much, or where we lose our ability to be able to do that.
Okay, yeah. And again, Chief, do you know, so state statute would trump city council ordinance, would it not?
Well, state statute, we have to follow that. But the city ordinance can be more restrictive than state statute, not less restrictive.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right. Well, if eight inches is state statute, then that's fine. If you could check on that, Andrew, and get back to us, maybe?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. What I'll do is I'll check on it, and if it's not in the statute, I'll put it in at 10, and we'll just call that to your attention next time, and we can always, that's an easy fix.
Okay, all right. Okay, I think subdivision 14A and B is pretty self-explanatory. Any? All right. Keep in mind, council, we don't have to finish this tonight, and I don't think we will. We'll see. But this is kind of the first run-through, as the chief mentioned, a draft ordinance. So, but let's see how far we can get. We've got a few more minutes here. Anything else then? Number 15? Or 16, or 17, or 18? Kathleen, did you have any issues with any of those?
Nope.
All right, Anne, Pam?
I didn't see anything that I had an issue with.
Okay, and Anne?
Nope.
All right. And then we have abatement of abandoned and junk vehicles. The chief of police or their designee may take into custody and pound any vehicle described in section 1510.05 subdivision, etc., manor authorized, and blah blah. I think that's self-explanatory, right? Do you need to make any comments on that, Andrew?
No, Madam Mayor. The only comment I would make is that's largely driven by statute, as Chief Falls just talked about. So we would rely primarily on state law, but having a reference in the ordinance will be helpful if we ever need to use it.
Okay. And so now we get into abatement of all other nuisances. Subdivision one is procedure. I think, Andrew, this is what you kind of touched on at the beginning, as to what the procedure would be?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Council, any questions under subdivision one procedure? I won't read it all, but basically, if there's a nuisance complaint, whenever a designated city official, which would be the police, determine that a public nuisance is being maintained or exists on a property in the city, the official shall notify in writing the owner of record or occupant. Then after they've notified them, then the notice of violation shall specify the steps that they have to take to bring their property or house, or whatever it is, into compliance. And then if the notice of the violation is not complied with within the time specified, do we need to specify in our ordinance what that timeframe is?
Madam Mayor and council, I would recommend not specifying it because that allows, you know, some nuisances could be abated in an afternoon, some are going to take several weeks, depending on what the condition is. And so leaving the ability to be flexible and to work with property owners is how most cities approach that. But that's not to say that you couldn't try to specify.
Okay. And then, then that official reports back to the city council. And then after that, the council may, after notice to the owner or occupant, opportunity, create an opportunity for them to be heard and determine that the condition identified in the notice of violation is a nuisance, and that if the nuisance is not abated within the time described by the city council, the nuisance be abated by the city. Any questions there? Any concerns? Okay, and then notice?
My biggest, oh, my biggest concern is the enforcement of this. Just making sure that there is strong enforcement of this. Because I think a lot of these measures have already been taken, and it's hard to get any movement on it.
Well, one of the reasons, too, is we're looking at the ordinance and making, you know, making sure it has some teeth to it, so that.
Yeah.
We're able to enforce it, too, so.
So this would apply to all current properties that are possible deemed as junk or nuisance properties.
Andrew, I believe that's correct. Is that not?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. The way that I described it the other day is that with nuisances, unlike land use and non-conforming use issues, you know, if the city changes the speed limit from 60 to 50, people can't continue to drive 60 because they were always driving 60, they need to abide by the new rule. The same thing would be true, in my opinion, of the nuisance ordinance. I think that there will be potentially, you know, a learning curve or a time to try to get voluntary compliance. But if and when the time comes that the city council ultimately wants to enforce these new rules against properties that they feel are non-compliant, the fact that, you know, this is a new intervening rule, I don't think would prohibit that. So it would give you an opportunity to use these new standards to, you know, to get prospective relief.
Okay. All right. Let's see. We'll take five more minutes, and then we'll adjourn. So we have a little bit of a break between our next meeting. Emergency procedure summary enforcement. In case of emergency where delay and abatement required to complete the procedure and notice requirements as set forth in subdivisions one and two of this section will permit continuing nuisance to unreasonably endanger public health, safety, or welfare, the city council may order summary enforcement and abatement of the nuisance, etc. Any questions on this paragraph?
No, but may I interrupt a second?
Sure, go ahead.
This is Anne. Okay. So I just, I'm a little confused. And if we, if you don't want to handle this tonight, it can be handled next time, or whatever. But let's go through an example. Let's say that there is a neighborhood issue. Does the neighborhood get together and create a petition, and then, or do they call the police? Or what exactly happens?
Good question. Andrew, or Chief?
Mayor, I think I'll defer to Chief, yeah.
Andrew first, and then the Chief.
Well, Madam Mayor, I was going to say, I'll defer to Chief Falls because I think it's him and his officers that respond to most of the calls.
Okay, thank you. Chief?
Sure, sure. Madam Mayor and council, that's a great question. So, you know, the vast majority of these types of complaints do get called into the police, and the vast majority of them are relatively minor and get resolved. So that would be my advice, is we'll determine when we get the complaint, based on the facts and the findings, how we move forward with it. The vast majority of nuisance complaints today just get taken care of when we meet with a homeowner and advise them of the complaint, and that it's a violation of ordinance, and most people take care of it. Every once in a while, we find people that don't, and we will generally issue a citation for simple violations. For example, they might have a couple of unregistered junk vehicles. If they don't want to take care of it, we issue a citation, and they either pay the fine, or they go to court and dispute it. And that's how most of those minor things are taken care of. The biggest piece in this draft ordinance is really the mechanism for the abatement piece, which is, goes more to the property we're all familiar with, when you have just multiple issues that aren't easily addressed through a citation. And I want to, I guess, explain really quick that when you give someone a citation, if they just go and pay it, that's kind of the end of it. And then it takes another complaint, and then we start that process all over again. So we kind of start these into two categories. The ones that we can handle through just talking to people or issuing citations for relatively minor offenses. And the bigger problem areas, like the one we're familiar with, where it ultimately will probably require some level of abatement, which is more of a civil process that the city council gets involved in. So that's probably a more complicated answer than you wanted, but.
No, that was exactly what I wanted, thank you.
Okay, very good.
All right. So I'm going to recommend, we got through most of it, but we still have about a page and a half to cover, and I want to make sure that we do cover it. So we'll bring this back, if not next time, maybe the following time, and hopefully get through it then. And with that, let's see, anything else? This is, oh, I know what I wanted to say. I asked, I talked to David because, so we have two ordinances that we've discussed here tonight. One ordinance, we're sending back to the Planning Commission, and they'll be holding eventually a public hearing regarding that. And I said to David, what's the difference, and how come we don't send this to the Planning Commission? Well, this isn't a zoning ordinance. So the city council can handle this, and we can do this without a public hearing. I just kind of thought I'd mention that because since we're talking about two ordinances, and why one is handled one way, and this is handled a different way. So with that, any other questions or comments? We have one more minute. We have one more minute, and then I'd like to adjourn again to give us about a ten-minute break. All right, is there a motion to adjourn then?
Just Kathleen, so motion.
Thank you, Kathleen, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, this is Pam.
Okay, I think the second was by Anne. So all those in favor will signify with aye. Aye vote aye, Lisa Whalen, Kathleen?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
And Anne?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four oh, and Mr. Trumperland is not here. So we are adjourned, and we will talk to you in ten minutes.